All right, everyone. Thank you. I want to call to order. This is a regular meeting of Mayor and City Council. Today is Monday, May 22. I'm going to, the first order of action is to have a pledge of allegiance. If you can, please rise.
I pledge allegiance. Which is standing. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move this out, please. Okay, thank you. All right, just a couple of announcements before we get into things. Earlier tonight, we swore in Mr. Joe Elder and Mr. Tim Richard. Tim is on his second term. Joe's, his entering his first term here. So I'd like to, one, congratulate and welcome them and thank them for their service.
Mayor, your mic is not on.
There we go. How about that?
We're good.
Yeah.
Okay, and at the same time, I'd also like to thank Candace Vassella for the service that she provided to us over the last year. I think Joe, Tim knows and the rest of us, and Joe's certainly going to find out that there's a lot of work involved in this, in this job. A lot, you know, rewarding work, but it's, it's hard work.
Don't tell them.
And, you know,
Don't.
Rewarding. We do appreciate Candace for her service, and we know that she'll continue to serve the city in many ways as she has in the past. And we'll, we'll be sure to do something to, to mark our appreciation for, for this work that she did do as a councilperson. And so I just make that, make that comment as well. So along with that, as congratulations are going out, we'd like to out our chief spell. Today is his birthday, so happy birthday, Chief Spell. So happy, you know, to announce that. Also, just an announcement about some other meetings this week. BPW did have an election this recently, and so they will add a new board member in the form of Barbara Curtis. And so they'll have their first meeting together on this Thursday in this room at three o'clock. So that would be BPW, slight change. They usually meet at four o'clock on Wednesdays, but three o'clock on Thursday this time. So the other just announcement is I will continue with the coffees that we've been hosting. Once the net house is operational and the construction is done there, we'll meet back there, but through June, probably.
I would say by mid-June.
Mid-June.
Be good together.
But until, so mid-June, we'll continue to meet at Margaret Rollins. In the back, there's a patio there. And so as long as the weather's nice, we'll meet there. Otherwise, we'll dip inside. So I would invite people to come to that. That's every Thursday morning at eight o'clock. Okay, so invite you to come. Yeah, no coffee. Bring your own coffee. So, yeah. And then blew it up. So there's some committee meetings and such, so just check your city calendar for those. Yeah, I'll go, Bike and Ped coming up, public art, and then we have a workshop right on the back of this, on this coming week. And so that's an announcement to make is nine thirty workshop. And typically, our workshops for those who are new to this is there where we do allow more sort of dialogue around topics that have either been introduced or are new items that aren't on our agenda yet. And to that end, tonight, as a regular meeting, we won't be taking comment from the public until the end. So we'll make our way through the agenda, and then there will be an opportunity for anyone to make comment at the end of a regular meeting. And then that same day, the twenty-fifth, LPC Environmental Committee, one o'clock. I mentioned the Board of Public Works meeting that same day. And LPC Housing Subcommittee is also that day. So the twenty-fifth, you know, bring a sack lunch. So it'll be a long day. Okay. With that, I don't think there are any additions or deletions to the agenda as, as I'm aware, am I? Okay. All right. So the other part of the annual meeting, this is our, considered our annual meeting where we make appointments and such. And so Joe's about to get his first committee assignment as an ex officio here. So what I'd like to do is sort of just read these off. And then, just like, we can do my consent agenda if everyone's okay. If there's, if Joe wants to object with his appointment, then, you know, too bad. All right, so not too many changes here, but I'll go ahead. So with current appointments, we're going to reappoint Councilperson Saliba as Deputy Mayor. Tim Richard as Secretary, Joe Elder as Assistant Secretary, Carolyn Jones as our Treasurer. Glenn Mendelsohn, City Solicitor, Ex officio to BPW, I'll continue in that role. Ex officio to BPW Finance Committee, Carolyn Jones will continue in that role. Code Enforcement will be headed up by John Robitaille. The Ex officio to the Planning Commission will be Tim Richard and myself. We will hold on BPW appointment to Planning Commission until their appointment on Thursday. The Ex officio H Park is Joe Elder. The Ex officio to Parks and Rec will be Carolyn Jones. Ex officio to Bike and Ped will be Khalil Saliba. Ex officio to the African American Heritage Commission will be Khalil Saliba. Ex officio to Public Art will be Tim Richard. Mitigation Planning Team will be myself. And the Finance will be Carolyn Jones and Joe Elder. We will reappoint Tom Bain as our Sussex County Liaison. And our State of Delaware Liaison will continue to be Dave Ennis. And our FOIA Coordinator will be our new clerk, Jamie McKenna. We are gonna go without naming an assessor. Hope we want the actions we take tonight will help remedy the scarcity of assessors in the town of Lewis. But until then, can I get a, a motion to accept those appointments as a consent agenda? Or a consent appointment, I should say?
Take a motion.
Motion from Carolyn Jones?
I'll second.
Second from Khalil? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that moves us into our Proclamations section. And I'll just briefly go with the, this is Gun Violence Awareness Day is, is June 2nd. And I think this is also something we could appreciate. This isn't saying that the city is per se against guns, but we can certainly say proudly that we are against gun violence. So as it says here, we just, gun violence touches every segment of our society and impacts people of all ages. It increases the probability of death and incidents of domestic violence, raises the likelihood of fatality by those who intend to injure others. And among those who attempt suicide, it places children and young people at increased risk of physical harm and injury, and disproportionately affects communities of color. And whereas Gun Violence Awareness Day honors the many lives that have been cut short by gun violence in our country and supports efforts to reduce gun-related crimes in the United States. And whereas it is important to recognize community organizations which assist families that have been directly impacted by gun violence and provide a continuum of care to grieving parents or spouses who must continue to provide for surviving family members. And whereas the city supports continued statewide efforts to strengthen gun safety laws and educate communities on gun, safe gun storage. And whereas it is appropriate to set aside time to honor those Americans whose lives are cut short each year with gun violence and the countless survivors whose lives are forever altered. Resolve therefore, Andrew Williams, Mayor of City of Lewis, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2023, as Lewis, in Lewis, as Gun Violence Awareness Day, and urge all citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to reduce gun violence in our community. So I would just, you know, getting encouraged. I think luckily, that's not been something that Lewis has self-experienced too much. We're thankful for the, the police that keep us safe as well. The next one I just want to touch on is a Bike to Work Day. Some people participated in that. I want to thank the Lewis Bike Shop. We're organizing. There was a really good turnout for that. And so real brief one here, that was May 19th. Bicycle commuting is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion, and conserve energy. And bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduce commuting and parking costs, and whereas the low cost of bicycle commuting saves money otherwise spent on fuel, private vehicle maintenance and parking. And whereas the City of Lewis is implementing bikeway improvements throughout the city to encourage and facilitate safe and convenient travel by bicycle. Resolve therefore, I, Andrew Williams, Mayor of the City of Lewis, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2023, in Lewis, as Bike to Work Day, and encourage all residents and local employees to bike to work. So that's, that event has passed. We did do it, but I would still encourage folks to use bikes wherever and when they can. We have a Bike and Ped Committee who put out some additional areas to park your bikes this year, and we're going to be working on a master plan along with Del Dot to see how we can make biking in Lewis safer. And I would encourage those who are using the trails to, again, watch your speeds there and be safe. Okay. The next one we have here is a presentation, possible action on appointment to Lewis Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Joe Hockner until May 2025. And I'd like to also nominate Bill Davis for that, that position. And also fill the expired terms of Nancy Stacy, Amy Marasco, and Richard Ennis. I'd like to reappoint those three to the Planning Commission along with Bill Davis to take the place of Joe Hockner, who stepped down earlier this year. Can I get a motion? Carolyn?
Motion.
Motion to accept those appointments?
Absolutely.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So that is Nancy Stacy and Amy Marasco, Richard Ennis, and now Bill Davis. So thank you for, thank you for your service. Well, we don't have an appointment for Tom Jensen yet.
No.
Yeah, we're still.
Right.
Yeah, still one more to fill. That'd be a year left in that term. Okay, same for this one. We have one appointment to make out of two. We don't have an appointment for Larry Adams, who is an architect. So if you know architects that are interested in preservation, please send them our way. But we will, we will nominate Mike DiPaolo to fill the expired term of Bill Landon. Can I get a
Make a motion?
A motion to accept Mike DiPaolo's nomination. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mike DiPaolo to the
Second for Carolyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that, and then thank you for Mike DiPaolo for, and also for Bill Landon for the service that you've given the city. The next, I'd like to turn it over to the chief for this one. And, you know, as I, as I said, we were fortunate to have a very high-quality police force and a high-quality chief that leads that team. And they recently had a, an event that I think is worth the community knowing about and celebrating. So go ahead, chief, take it over.
Thank you, Mayor.
Was that how you get them? I knew it was something good, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present a Lewis story that really captures so much about our, our city, our citizens, and our employees. On May 6, 2023, Seashore Striders held their fourteenth annual half marathon race through the city of Lewis. During that race, forty-nine-year-old runner Nicholas Mastrosinkway suffered a major cardiac event at the intersection of East Market Street and Massachusetts Avenue, rendering him unconscious and without a heartbeat. Watching the race were Lewis residents John Jack Tyson, a doctor for BB Healthcare, and his wife Debbie Tyson, a retired nurse. The Tysons immediately responded to the down runner and started medical care. They observed that Mastrosinkway did not have a pulse and had agonal tight breathing, signs of cardiac arrest. John and Debbie started emergency CPR. As they were performing CPR, race runner Hunter McFalls, who was seconds behind Mastrosinkway, observed the Tysons rendering medical aid and stopped running to assist. Hunter is also trained in CPR and without hesitation jumped in to help. In less than a minute, Lewis Police Officer Nick Yatsko arrived on the scene and also started assisting in the CPR. After many rounds of chest compressions, all four, chest compressions by all four, Lewis Police Officer Kyle Panko arrived and immediately grabbed his in-car automated external defibrillator. Patrolman Yatsko cut the shirt off Mastrosinkway and Patrolman Pankok applied the defibrillator pads. The AED reading did not detect the pulse, and Panko administered the shock. Within seconds of that shock, Mastrosinkway's heart began to beat again. All five, three civilians and the two police officers remained on scene, continuing medical care until the arrival of EMS. Mastrosinkway was quickly transported to BB Hospital, where he was admitted in critical condition. According to the attending emergency room doctor, the care given by Patrolman Yatsko, Panko, and citizens John and Debbie Tyson and Hunter McFall was critical and undoubtedly saved the life of Nicholas Mastrosinkway. Tonight, I would like to formally recognize Patrolman Nick Yatsko and Patrolman Kyle Pankok with the Lewis Police Department Life Saving Award. I would also like to formally recognize Lewis residents John and Debbie Tyson and Rehoboth resident Hunter McFalls with the Distinguished Citizen Community Member Award. But at this time, I would first like to welcome cardiac arrest survivor Nicholas Mastrosinkway to the podium to say a few words and help me hand out these awards. Nicholas?
Never in my life have I looked forward to a city council meeting. Very grateful to the Lewis Police Department and to the bystanders who helped me, the Tysons and Mr. McFall. I am very, very grateful. My wife and I moved here two years ago. Lewis is our adopted city and Delaware is our adopted state, and we are very fortunate to be here. It is good to be out of the hospital. It is good to breathe the pre-air once again. I thank you so much. This wonderful sense of community in Lewis, and you have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick, according to the certificate here, you display the highest level of professionalism and dedication to duty, is hereby officially commended and awarded the life-saving award and eight hours off with pay.
Oh, right.
Thank you, Nick.
Kyle, same with you. We're gonna get a group photo. Don't go anywhere then. Play the highest level of professionalism and dedication to duty, is hereby officially commended and awarded the life-saving award and eight hours off with pay.
Excellent.
Don't go anywhere. John and Debbie Tyson.
All right.
You look better than last time. I'm sorry.
Ah, amen.
On behalf of the City of Lewis and Lewis Police Department, John and Debbie Tyson are awarded the Distinguished Community Member Award for performing such a special service which resulted in the saving of life. Thank you very much. I can't give you eight hours off. And finally, last but not least, Hunter McFalls. Hunter, on behalf of the City of Lewis and the Lewis Police Department, you are awarded the Distinguished Community Member Award for performing such a special service which resulted in the saving of life. Thanks very much. Everybody real quick, everybody real quick without me. How about that? That'll prove it. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you all three.
I'm telling you, it makes you feel good, Jerry.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Wow.
I'll second that.
Give the folks a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow, pretty awesome. Bless was he? Was he blessed or what?
Only interested in hearing interest stories.
You talking about blessed? I hope if I fall, somebody's around me.
Bill, how do you?
All right.
There it goes on when you talk.
Yeah, it goes on when you talk.
Yeah, yes, but sometimes you have to hit one of these. I don't know how it works. Where's the mute?
Do you see the red light? Yes, the red light means it's activated.
Okay.
What does it mean when both red lights?
So Phil, no, no pressure now, you know?
Oh, I've read this red light.
Oh, you have a life-saving award. I mean, okay, so let's, let's wait for the chief to get back in. Okay, so the next, the next action on the agenda is to swear, the swearing-in of Officer Philip Foreman. So let's go ahead and do that.
We got another officer. Yeah. We've had another officer. Bring us to fifteen. Now.
Okay. So, all right, Bill, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Philip Foreman,
I, Philip Foreman.
Do proudly swear,
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities
Carry the responsibilities.
Of the office and City of Lewis Police Officer.
The office and City of Lewis Police Officer.
To the best of my ability,
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging that the powers of this office
Freely acknowledging the powers of this office.
Flow from the people I am privileged to represent.
Flow from the people that I am privileged to represent.
I further swear
Further swear.
Always to place the public interest above any special or personal interest.
To place.
Respect the right of future generations.
Respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich historic
To share the richest story.
And natural heritage of Delaware.
Natural heritage of Delaware.
In doing so,
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend
Always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of my country and my state, so help me God.
The Constitution of my country and state.
Congratulations. Okay. Chief, I told him there's no pressure now, you know, you just only have to say, you know, right now.
Does it get eight hours off?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
Oh, that's the baby.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so I think we're on to the consent agenda.
Yeah.
And so do I, did anyone want to pull anything from there?
No, I had no problems with it.
All right, Joe, so just for your benefit, as long as, in the future, if you have minutes, if you have issues, pull, pull out. Otherwise, we, if there's no issues, we can take on as a consent agenda. So I'll take a motion to accept this as a consent agenda.
And I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the minutes and reports are recorded. To, to that end, though, is Austin or?
Austin said he was participating on Zoom, so I don't know.
Awesome. If you want to say something, raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll move on.
He's number two there.
He's not. Yeah, he
Oh, no.
He didn't raise his hand, so.
Okay. All right, Austin, you can comment at the end. I know you'll stay on till the end, for sure.
Put the beer down.
On to you, the presentation, the city manager's report.
All right, so get started on this, starting with our capital projects. The BPW had a progress meeting on April 5th for Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park. So I, I think we know it's getting off to a very slow start. On April 3rd, Janet and John LaFerty, the Doc Master, and I met with GMB staff and staff from East Coast Contracting, who's doing the Marina work, to look at an area where the gangway is pulling away. So after some further review by the GMB Structural Engineer, it looks like we're, we're going to be able to get to that work after the season. But the East Coast Contracting is interested in doing the work to, to repair that. We've had a really hard time trying to find a contractor who, who would do the work. And then we had on, on both April 14th and April 28th, we had meetings on the decking replacement project, which is, is moving along. And that should be done by the end of the first week of June. In terms of personnel, we had three new hires. Marco Cutrone with maintenance, Billy Kraus with maintenance, and Jake Sykes with the Police Department. Jake is now in the academy. Jonathan Garcia also became the Assistant Building Official, leaving a vacancy in Code Enforcement Officer, which Chelsea Moore has since filled, leaving a vacancy in Permit and License Specialist, which has been filled by Kayla, which next month's report will indicate that Jamie McKenna was hired in May to fill the clerk position. In Parks and Marina, Janet attended a webinar, Leadership and Management Skills for Women, offered by Prior Learning. And she's also participated in bi-weekly meetings for the Juneteenth Plannings. Professional Development, on April 6th, I attended an event presented by the Biden Institute at the University of Delaware in conjunction with the IPA, or I'm sorry, the University of Delaware ICMA Student Chapter, where there was a panel that discussed housing challenges in the state, focusing really on homelessness and the lack of affordable housing. John Robitaille completed a FEMA floodplain class that took place on Tuesdays for over a period of four weeks. And on April 20th, all of our supervisory staff and, and staff from neighboring municipalities participated in a leader-as-coach training program provided here in Lewis by the International City County Management Association. Departmental Operations, you know, trash beach rake, again, we, we've, the beach rake work has been really busy this preseason compared to other, other times. I think the, the storms that we had going back to the fall, but even through the winter and spring, really had a lot of debris on the beach. Business licenses, we had twenty-nine new business licenses issued for long-term rental licenses and twenty-four short-term rental licenses issued during the month. I did include on here also the total number of licenses in each of these categories. Especially, I'm getting a lot of questions regularly about how many short-term rental versus long-term do we have? So I do want to report the total number of licenses also on the, it's on, it's on the screen and it's in the, the non-PowerPoint presentation as well. That was just added today. So again, it was, our permit volume has been pretty steady, looking at those numbers. I'm looking, we did not, I don't think have any, oh, we did, I'm sorry, we had five new home permits issued during the month. So bonfires, you'll remember last month and the month before, activity in the recreational sector was a little slow. It's picking up. We're having regular bonfires now. So as, as you know, we can expect to see that continue. On April 18th, the Board of Elections met to certify the election results. I think we all know what happened with that as Dr. Elder and I think we all know what happened with that, as Dr. Elder and, and Mr. Ritter were sworn in earlier this evening. Electric Vehicle Planning and Implementation, we signed a proposal with PXD Infrastructure Solutions to complete a feasibility study for the city fleet. It's being funded by Energize Delaware. We expect it to be completed this month, maybe early June. On April 26th, Ellen Lorraine, Tim and I met with BP Pulse and Borg Warner and PXD to discuss applying for a grant for DC Fast Charging Hub at Otis Smith Park. That sense actually kind of fell apart, but we have other partners that are willing to work on the grant. Well, really just without BP Pulse, but we are proceeding forward with the grant and we'll see how that goes. Ellen Lorraine, Chief Spell and I met with the, the school district about the potential of hiring a school resource officer. We discussed it at the April 27th workshop, so we're going to continue to engage with the district on that. I met with Alex on April 5th, and I think we've talked since about the charter amendments. We have a signed agreement with Family Promise for ARPA funding, and hopefully we've dispersed the funding, so I need to, to work on that. On April 6th, Janet Reeves and I met with members of the Lewis Junction Railroad and Bridge Association. We talked about the MOU and, you know, their plans for the site. I actually got an email today from Randy Voith, they want to have a, a meeting in early June as well. So we're trying to, to really stay up to date on, on their plans for how they're going to work on the exhibitions within their site. Del Dot relined the crosswalk and striping on Savannah Road crosswalks. And we are working on getting it lined up to, to do the same on the, the front street crosswalks. April 11th, the Board of Adjustment held a very long meeting where they remanded H Park's denial of the Daisy's demolition request. Back to H Park, H Park and the Daisies actually met last week, and I think it, it was a, a pretty productive meeting. So hopefully that, that moves forward in a, in a good way. Ellen Lorraine, Carolyn and I met with Dart and finalized the, the route for the Lewis Line, which started today. We are going to Five Points and we're working on an agreement with the shopping center, but at this point, we are using the, the Dart bus stop on the road. We can't do anything in terms of parking at the shopping center until we work out some of the details with them. On April 18th, we held a progress meeting on Old Town at White's Pond. The, the big thing there is they have been working on the intersection improvements, including getting everything ready for the signalization. So mid-June, I think they're supposed to be done, their portion of it, and then by hopefully the end of the summer, the signal would be installed by Del Dot. Okay, Lu- Lewis Line, again, these are the stops. Again, we added the Village of Five Points, Bay Breeze, and Zwanndale Museum, the Dart stop at Zwanndale Museum. Other meetings, the developers of Mariners Retreat began to work on finishing the infrastructure. So I expect that they'll come forward at some time soon for dedication. And we had a, a progress meeting on Fisher's Cove, site working and grading has begun and will continue. I know we, we've had recent discussions, I've had, had some very good productive dialogue with neighbors over the last week, and we're going to try to be proactive in, in, you know, providing information to, so that they know what to expect. So they, the, the progress schedule or the construction schedule at this point has been shared with the neighbors, and, and so far, they seem pretty appreciative of that. On April 21st, we held a very successful blood drive with the Blood Bank of Del Marva. We'll be doing it again for National Night Out. I, I just want to give a shout out to Sue Ann Hennessy, who did a lot of work to get that planned. And I know the feedback that we got was that it was a perfect venue and a very successful day. On April 24th, Andrew, Tim and I participated in a biweekly, well, I, what, I guess it was biweekly at that point, but I guess it's monthly now. Or are they biweekly? I don't know, anyway. Meeting with Tom Panetta, Earl Webb and Austin to just continue our, our discussions with them about how their wastewater plans are moving forward or evaluations. On April 25th, we had a, a city staff meet and greet. It was, we had about twenty or so people come in, but the people who were there were very appreciative, and, and we're going to look to do something like that in the fall with the city commissions. On April 26th, Ellen Lorraine and I attended a meeting with the Sussex County Association of Railtors and municipalities where we talked about things to expect in the, in the coming summer months. On April 27th, the mayor, Chata Marsh and I attended the Sussex County Evacuation Planning Workshop hosted by C-Grant at Del Tech. So that was further discussed at the mitigation planning team meeting. And the building and, the planning and building department completed the annual audit of the community rating system, which is the program that rates the city based on things that we're doing to prepare for or mitigate flood damage. That was submitted, we got word last week that we passed a ninety-six percent. So, you know, we were in school, that would be an A.
We'll take it.
So that, that's beneficial, you know, us complying with our CRS requirements helps to keep the, the flood insurance more affordable for our property owners. On April 26th, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee met with Del Dot and Rossi representatives to discuss the Bicycle Master Plan. So they're, they're working now on kind of next steps, and there will be a workshop this summer, and I cannot remember the date, it's in June. On April 28th, Arbor Day Celebration was held, of course, it was a rainy day. So we didn't have as much of a turnout, but we did have Sussex Tree come to the Rollin Center, and we were able to, the, the people who did show up, we had some pretty good discussions about pre-care and, and things. In late April, the city received its 2022 Tree City Recognition Materials, and I'm wondering if that should be 2023. So, but anyway, maintenance will assist with updating the signs and the new materials as their schedules allow, so. Been a busy month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right, so now we're going to get into our regular business. So there's two sections, that unfinished business and new business. And the first we'll take on is I-1. This is Presentation of Possible Action on Resolution, Support or Proposed Amendments to the City of Lewis Charter. So we've been going through this for a couple of months, and we've had a public hearing. We've had input from residents, and so tonight, the intention is to go through in a similar fashion as we did with the public hearing. So there's, there's a summary sheet that has been provided, and the way that we'll sort of take this on is section by section. So section one is, is actually going to include what we call contract section. This is Charter Section 14. Okay, so what the, what we're summarizing here is that line seven would increase, and I think I'm still, yeah, this is correct, okay. Line seven would increase the contract for which competitive bidding is required from twenty-five to fifty thousand. Some subtext is in 2009, the charter was amended to change the threshold required for competitive bidding from ten to twenty-five for the purposes of comparison. Twenty-five thousand in 2009 would be worth around thirty-five thousand today. So following the public hearing and after receiving questions about competitive bidding process, we, there've been modified language to make it clear, and what we've done is to highlight the language in blue. Blue, that was a cue for you to, are you, are you able to bring up both? There you go, well done, thank you, Blue. All right, so what, what was actually shown on here is the aggregate is stricken through. I think in conversations that I've had, I think there's an appetite to leave aggregate in.
If the word aggregate bothers everybody, why don't you just say total?
Total, aggregate, but the other, so what, what would read is the, the total or the aggregate of the project or contract amount involved is not more than fifty thousand.
Correct.
And then we would also, the other requests.
Can you say again what that would say?
Project work contractors.
The aggregate of the project or contract amount involved is not more than fifty thousand. And there was, there, there was also a poll, a, a purchasing policy that's been, that's getting drafted. And what I'd like to suggest in part of our motion is that we, or we reference the purchase policy that, that it will be adhered to.
Right, we have it.
Uh, in the bidding, in this. Okay, so, and then Amber and I actually discussed a couple of other things today that I just wanted to also raise, and then others might have, but one was the per, in section two, the contract is for personal or professional services. We kind of discussed that, you know, there may not be a need to have personal in there. I don't know that we do need to spend fifty thousand dollars for personal services, I would hope not.
If we do, that's a problem.
I'd like to remove that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the other, and this is. And this is a question for Glenn and Alex, because it's either a misprint or, you know, my SAT recollection, you know. So the word is materiel, and this is in line thirty. And I, I looked up materiel, and it could mean, could be appropriate where it's a collection of materials that's useful for an organization, but I, my, my question is, do, do we mean material or do we mean material?
Well, so this is language is pulled directly from state code, it's a, it's a direct copy and paste, so that is the word that's used in the state code.
We're using it correctly.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it, because I did look it up for the, for those that, you know, got less than eight hundred on their English portion. Usually it's a military term, so it's equipment for military, but it could also in a governmental context be, you know, a collection of materials for our organization's purpose, so.
Now we all learned something new.
Okay, so I've made my comments on that section, are there others before we, someone makes a motion for this particular section of?
Can I? Question. You, did you want to put language in the charter specifically that would say?
About the purchasing policy? Yeah, and I'm thinking the, the most, it, it would probably make the most sense after eleven, where you're talking about, after you've gone through all of those criteria that you need to follow, but ultimately you're saying the, the, the purchasing policy will be followed. I mean, whether you put that after the first.
Right after the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Is that what you suggested, just right after the amount?
Or, or how about further defined by the purchase, purchasing policy?
Further defined by. Already contributing.
So the, the concern with that is that those, that list is of exceptions. So I, I'm wondering if perhaps if we go up to lines three through five and say, "All contracts for the purchase of materials for the furnishing of services authorized or permitted by this chapter shall be accomplished in accordance with policy set forth by, by city council and by competitive bidding." Is that?
And the, the purpose of that for the public is just so that this, as we've said in the past, is that this is a framework, and then the, by having a policy or an ordinance, you can be more or less restricted with future councils.
Is that language a kick?
So I think by putting.
You should reference the title of the document, excuse me.
I just want to be sure that we don't put, that you all don't put anything or suggest to put something in the charter that somebody would interpret it as being able to deviate from what the charter says, so long as the policy, so as long as you're following the policy. So we might want to think about something that says, you know, consistent with this. And, consistent with the charter and the personnel.
Competitive bidding.
Yeah, we're not taking anything away.
Right. Right.
Shouldn't have.
That's the way she, she just read it. In according to, right, policy.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, the, the problem is if you call it a purchasing policy, if you do it and call it something else, that, that's why I would just say in accordance with policy approved by city council. That way you can call it whatever you want, you could do an ordinance, you could do.
And you're not changing it.
Right.
You're adding to it, is that an issue?
No, I'm just looking at more, so I would say something like, "All contracts for the purchase of materials or for the furnishing of services authorized or permitted by this charter shall be accomplished in accordance with this charter as further described in the, in policies adopted by," you know, something like.
Okay, you want to say in accordance with the chart?
I want to be sure that it's clear to the legislators, we're going to have to adopt this at General Assembly, that we're not asking for authority to deviate from the charter, but it's going to be in accordance with the charter as further defined by the purchasing policy.
Fine.
And is there value to add policy and procedures or just policy?
Well, I think the policy's enough because it's going to have the procedures, the policy's going to define the procedures.
Okay, okay, all right. And, and again, where is this language being inserted, please?
Line four.
It's up in the, online.
Can you email me your language, so?
Yeah, line four.
Okay. So any, any, any additions or further comment, or is anyone prepared to make a motion on those?
I make a motion that we. Did you have something?
Yeah, I do actually have, I think I do have a question. Uh, online, let me see, I'm not sure which line, yeah, okay, it's line eighteen, number seven. I'm sorry?
This time it's materials.
Yeah, it's materials to be purchased or to be used to complete a project under the supervision of the city manager. Would it be useful to say, add, or it's designate?
Or designate?
And so in other words, we have a city manager, and we also have an assistant city manager. And this would mean, the way this is written, the assistant city manager would have no ability to exercise supervision or provide.
City manager is your top official.
I understand, but if the city manager is not present, is not, you know, away on vacation, or whatever, you know, does that mean that we suspend all times?
No, 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 I mean.
That imply? Does that imply typically?
It automatically goes to the person who's taking.
I don't know.
So I guess to the point, I, I can, I can, you're saying, you're saying, under the supervision of the city manager, everyone falls underneath or supervised by the.
And the assistant person falls under the city manager, so I think it's covered.
Okay.
Supervision.
All right.
And the, the, I think the policy also spells out who has what levels of authority, what other levels, right? That's what you start, you've crafted, right?
Yep. So I make a motion that we accept the, the language on line seven, which is, read it back, Amber, do you remember?
Well, line, line seven.
With the change.
Line seven, okay, so as, as I understand it, the motion would be.
Want to make sure you have.
To insert the language recommended by the solicitor on line four. And on line seven, to have it state the aggregate of the purchase or contract amount involved.
Yes, it's not more than fifty.
That's, that, that's what I have in my notes.
Okay.
Okay, and we're also going to remove personal from line nine.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
Personal.
Yes, I have that too.
Right. Okay, we'll leave a material all right, as it is. Okay.
Motion?
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Oh, I'll, I'll second the motion then.
Yeah.
Okay, motion second, do, do we need to go through a roll call? Okay, so we can buy a consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any get opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so that passed. Okay, so now we go to section two and three, which is actually.
Section three will actually come out because there are no changes proposed.
That's what I was going to say, so this is actually affecting section twenty of the charter. So we're looking at, for those following the label here, lines forty-two through forty-five, okay? And what, what we're actually doing here is, we had discussed, there's no change here really with respect to the, the process. So there had been some talk about issuing bonds exceeding five million, and that was intended to ensure that we weren't going to try to take out bonds unless it was more than five million, because it doesn't fiscally make sense to, to spend all that money to get a bond that's not. But nonetheless, to avoid confusion, we've, we've taken that out. We've also left. We've also, um, left where it says and approved by the electors in a, in a manner at the time following, so I wanted to stay here just for a second, because I think one of the things that came up in the public hearing was the idea of the enfranchisement. So I did want to address that, uh, so here again, it just makes clear that if there's bond, bonded, there will be a referendum. At this point, non-resident, residents would, uh, and non-residents would be allowed to vote. Non-resident property owners would be allowed one vote in this case. Along with that, I did want to mention that this Thursday, we were having a workshop. And in that workshop, we will begin the discussions of exploring voting for non-residents. This is an exploration, and this will involve putting together a committee to look at this. That is not to say that we are going to do it or not going to do it, but the request was there, so we will explore that in a workshop. This is, we're not taking up any charter changes to, to action voting for non-residents at this point. But they will have representation, continue to have representation in a bond, voting with this language. I just want to make that crystal clear. The other thing that we have added here, as you can see in line forty-two, uh, continuing on to forty-three is for the purchase of real estate, uh, so that just would give a flexibility to this council or future councils, that if there was a bond that was issued. There's clarity that part of that could include purchase of real estate.
And, and that's highlighted in blue because in the prior versions there had been more things listed that could be used with bond proceeds and the general sense I got from, I think all of you was that things, because it, it even included like general operations, vehicle.
That's not it.
So we took all of that out and only added.
Purchase of real estate.
Purchase of real estate.
Correct.
So that's, that, that's the only change there is the add of purchase of real estate, everything else remains the same, so we've highlighted that to just to highlight the fact that again. There, the referendum does allow for the vote of non-residents.
Uh, just some clarification.
Yes, sir.
The purchase of real estate, would this be the only way to purchase real estate through the bond?
No.
That's further in, in the process, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
You could apply a head of general funds, you can, yeah.
But there'd still be a section if you decided to go to the other way of financing purchase of the real estate.
Okay, so with that, um, this, that's really the, um, the section twenty changes there, do you want to make, do anyone want to make a motion to approve that section or not?
I make a motion to approve this purchase of real estate.
Okay, second, Joe Elder, motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstain? Okay, so that one also is a yes. All right, so now we're all to section four, which is charter section twenty-five. Okay, this involves, uh, lines sixty-three through sixty-nine, and what we're doing here is, uh, we would remove the requirement for the city appointed assessor to be a bona fide resident of the city of Lewis. Would also allow the city of Lewis to utilize the county assessment in lieu of appointing an assessor and maintaining our own assessment records. This would apply to annual and quarterly assessments, so again, I just want to pause here to point out this, this gives us flexibility in two regards. From an assessing standpoint, we can hire a firm, uh, which most municipalities are doing around here, um, because there aren't, I guess, assessors are becoming like the dodo bird. Um, but the, the other piece it allows us to do is if in the future, we determine a future council determines that doing our own assessments becomes too cumbersome or expensive. They could, they could turn that over to the county. That would require an ordinance change to enact that. You could also have subsequent ordinance that would remove that in the future. So all this is doing for us is providing flexibility in the charter, it's not to imply that we will um, be taking on the county's assessment, uh, so just, just wanted to make that clarity. But the language that in here does give us the flexibility to do that, so that's, um, you know, essentially, um, what that section's all about. Any comments, any concerns that others had from that one?
Well said.
Okay, then can I get a, a motion to approve what we're calling section four concerning the assessor, which is the amendments, the changes to a charter section twenty-five?
Mm-hmm, I make a motion to accept.
Motion from Carolyn, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Coley's got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions, okay. So the next, um, I think we did, but are we good on both then? Assessment of taxes is all covered in there, right?
Five and six are, are, are all part of four, but you might.
Then I get a motion to accept then the charter's changes in section twenty-six, which relates to the county.
Yes.
Motion from Carolyn, second.
Motion.
Can I get a second? I can, Joe's got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right, uh, section six, which again is continuation, is just more language, it's covers lines one forty, one forty-eight through one forty-nine, one fifty-two, one sixty-four, one sixty-five, one seventy, one seventy-one, one seventy-three through one seventy-five. And lines one eighty-six to one ninety, and again, this is revising supplemental to allow for the city to utilize this county's assessment instead of appointing a city assessor. The lines eighty-six to ninety would clarify that the city chooses the sound, the assessment, there would be no city level assessment appeal. Staff has confirmed with the Sussex County that as a process for appealing assessment, Board of Appeals meets in March and there is a twenty-five dollar fee. Um, the lines ninety-four, nine, one ninety-four none through one ninety-six and one ninety-nine through two hundred would remove specific penalty amount for unpaid from the charter and would give the city discretion on the penalty amount, the amount of penalty would be specified in the code. Um, and to that end, so I think, I just had a question, I think I clarified with, uh, around one lines one ninety-four.
What was your question?
Well, the penalties, uh, I think there was language, it just said blankly penalties, but I think, Emery, I talked to you about actually making reference to the fact that the tax penalties would be again approved by Mayor and City Council.
Oh.
Rather than just saying penalties, it would say penalties as approved by Mayor and City Council.
So you're proposing that language?
That cha, that's small change.
Oh, here it is.
Because it is in the code, but I think we just need to point that out as the mayor and council are the ones upset, because I think it said the city manager.
We're focused on, uh, section F, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to raise another issue there.
Okay, go ahead.
And that has to do with the fact that the language as it reads now, unless the language has been changed and I don't have that iteration in front of me, um, there is the provision here for a refund for the penalty. But, um, it does not specify that the penalty that's been assessed would also be refunded. Start, the paragraph starts with pending determination of the appeal.
What number is that?
Uh, that's line one ninety-one, and it runs through. Right.
Okay, so so you're, okay, so what you're suggesting is that it should say shall be entitled to a refund of the taxes which he has paid in addition to any penalty.
Okay, okay, I get that.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so with those changes, so again, the, the change of saying, um, penalties as approved by Mayor and City Council and the, the inclusion that, uh, appeal penalties and, uh, and fees would be refunded.
Yes.
That's your.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And, um.
Do you want a sentence at the end that would say, um, I mean, I think what you're suggesting, Andrew, is, is that we have something that states that it needs, that the penalty needs to be set by council.
Yeah, because it just says penalties, and it says that the city manager will give the penalties, but it doesn't say how they're
Right.
Where they're coming from, yeah, I think that it needs to be clear that the council's the one that's setting those penalties.
The supplemental assessment, in which case penalties comma as determined by city council, comma.
What line are you on?
I'm at one ninety-six, but I think mine is a little bit, my numbers are a little bit off.
It's in. That's right.
That's right.
One ninety-six.
She say, in, in which case, penalties as determined by mayor and city council shall accrue for each month or fraction thereof.
Oh, I see.
Well, actually, I think where I'm at is, um, two, line two hundred. Where it says, you know, the city manager shall add penalties. And that's where I would say as determined by Mayor and City Council for each month or fraction of.
Penalties a, as determined by city council.
Because.
Page two, line two hundred, where is that?
Line two hundred, and what this is penalties. And I would suggest is that there was no description of the penalties offered.
Or, okay.
That's what I think, it is defined in the code, but if we say that as defined by Mayor and City Council, that implies that it's.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, um, can I get a motion to, to approve this section with those two changes?
Yes, I make a motion.
Motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second from, uh, uh, councilperson Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Okay, great, um, so now we move on to enumeration of powers, this is having to do with charter section nineteen. Um, and this is, uh, lines two oh nine through two eleven, and again, I just sound the don't want to sound alarm bells, we're not doing this to raise your taxes. We're doing this because there are more homes that are coming online, there's an assessment coming which may raise your, your taxes, so therefore we need to raise the ceiling, um, so we'll see if Congress does, uh, also, but we're going to raise, uh, our tax ceiling here. And there are two ways that we're going to accomplish that, one is by making sure that if the, if the uh, values go down, that we're not in such a way that we go below a number that we need to function, so we're going to set a um, a, a ceiling as such, um, a, a taxable ceiling. So, uh, let me see if I'm reading this correct. The proposed new language highlighted, uh, so for reference purposes, point five of the fully assessed value of land and improvements would be five million nine thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars, so what we've done is, we've, um, given a full assessment there of five million, so what this language should then read is the changed part. Uh, it will say provided the amount raised from this source not exceed the sum equal to one half of one percent of the fully assessed value of land and improvements within the city. Uh, I think maybe I should say, or five million, whichever is greater.
Right, right, right.
So again, it won't exceed that, can be less.
Right, well, whichever is greater, that's it.
Go ahead.
May I, uh, in the same paragraph, what I noted when I read this is, is that this language under from two oh four through two eleven appears to apply only to land that is leased in the city. It is not applicable to, but the simple property. And my question is, is, do we have an opportunity now to clean up this language, or I'm not really sure what the intention here is.
Yeah, I, I, Tim and I talked about this, so he's talking about section, uh, lines two oh six located on land under a valid lease period.
A valid lease for a period of at least ten years.
If you look at two oh four to two oh five.
Exactly, it says all, all real estate.
Yes.
State improvement located there on, and so.
So there's another and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you go all the way up to two oh four, it gets the full, we looked at that before.
Okay.
Upon all real estate.
Are you satisfied with that?
I, I am, I am, yeah, I think the first phrase takes care of real estate in general, the second phrase takes care of those leased lands.
Right.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable? All right then, so let, can we get a motion on accepting, uh, this is again, charter section nineteen.
Line two oh four.
Yeah, lines two and nine, yeah.
Two oh four to.
No, this is two oh nine, isn't it? Two oh nine through two eleven is the, is the change area that we're looking for.
The highlighted.
Yeah, highlighted with.
And with adding the word or.
Yes, I rest, make a motion.
Right, is that how it's going to read?
Right.
Are you, you're clear, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, all right then, so can I, I want to call for a motion now then, Carolyn, you're giving me that motion? All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed? No, all abstentions? No, did I, am I missing one page? There's eight, right?
Yeah.
Let me see yours. You know.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, what's that one, so here we go, okay, oh yeah, okay, this is the exciting one, uh.
We're on two and two.
Yeah, so my, my understanding is, uh, section eight, we, we didn't really change, right?
Um, what, the only thing, we, we reverted back to it, you to the language that was there because there was discomfort with the proposed change, but we did add including bonded indebtedness.
No, not including.
Or not, not, right, not including bonded indebtedness, so that would be.
So we do need to vote on that, okay, so again, the other bit about, um, the valuations unchanged, we, we left that language alone, but we are just clarifying that this is not, uh, the sum, aggregate is not including.
Okay.
Not indebtedness.
Yeah, just.
Can I get a motion?
That has to be done to.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Again, a motion.
Motion second?
I'll second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great, um, section nine then, curbing and pavement. Uh, this is really only a, uh, an exercise in improving, uh, the notification. Just as a reminder to folks, uh, we will take up in the future, uh, the funding of sidewalks, I think, um, we've all articulated that, you know, we may want to examine the, the fairness of having our owners pay for the sidewalk in front of their house as opposed to having it be a collective ownership of the city. Uh, but that's not what we're doing tonight, tonight is really just around, um, the notification requirement, um, and I believe um, it's really just a lot of, uh, scratch, some of the added sections is the, the, the main jux of it is a line two sixty-two. At least two weeks prior to the exercise of power under this section, any particular instance, the city manager shall provide notice to owners of property in front of or adjacent to the locations where work shall be done. And in my mind, this is important whether the owner's going to pay for it or not, because even if you're not paying for it, you're going to want to know that, uh, work's going to be done.
notified.
Yeah, so that's all we're doing here, um, so can I get a motion to, um, approve these changes having to do with curbing and, uh, sidewalks?
Yes, I make the motion.
Okay, motion second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so there were some changes, you know, the resolution, so what will happen is there'll be a resolution and a copy of the changes that were approved that we went through tonight. Um, our fine secretary here will sign off on them and then we'll, um, send them up to legislation for.
Right.
I think the only thing that really would be a change in the resolution would be to take, to, to add the word aggregate back on to line nineteen where I took it out.
Yeah.
Um, and other than that, um, if you want to do a motion to approve the resolution, then. So be it.
And can I get a motion to approve, uh, resolution? Uh, pursuant to amendments to charter change, chapter one seventy, volume fifty-seven, laws of Delaware as amended relating to city contract requirements and exceptions, the city's ability to borrow money and incur indebtedness, the assessment of taxes and the procedural requirements concerning city curbing and paving, repair and maintenance with the addition in line nineteen to, uh, reinsert the word aggregate for, uh, clarity there, can I get a?
I think there are a couple, there are a couple of other changes, just to be, just to be clear, there's one where the councilperson Richard wanted to make sure that the assessed fees or, uh, the, the but, but I have them by email here, so, so long, so long as we change the resolution to reflect the votes that were taken.
You have everything. He just sent you the updated one, so you don't have to make the changes that were already made?
Sure.
Okay, I'll send that to you.
Thanks.
Okay.
So the motion would be the motion that the mayor just said with the changes that were voted on in the individual motion earlier.
And the changes will, will take place in exhibit, is it exhibit A that we're calling, that's where the main changes would be, okay, so that's the motion I'll call for. Can, can I get a motion to approve this resolution with the amendments that we've made to be reflected in exhibit A? Um, to be sent to, uh, to the Delaware legislation.
Make that motion.
Motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, um, any against? Abstentions? No, okay, so those are done, I think, uh, everyone participated, I know there are a lot of folks in the community who dug deep on this stuff and gave us some, uh, good feedback and it's much appreciated, and, um, stay tuned, uh, stay tuned on for how they pan out in the legislation at this point, all right, I too will take, next, which is presentation of possible action on a resolution is set in public hearing. how they pan out in the legislation at this point. All right, I too were taking next, which is presentation of possible action on a resolution is set in public hearing on a draft ordinance to municipal code, City Lewis. Uh, to one ninety-seven zoning, Article thirteen, conditional uses. Uh, this is one ninety-seven dash ninety-seven required finding subsection two of manufactured home parks. Um, so uh, I think this one has been through LPC. Uh, I don't know if uh, some of us take up discussion or make a motion on this one.
But we have, uh, if I can.
Go ahead, Carol.
We have several public hearings here and would it be to our advantage to read all of them and then make a motion on all of them rather than go through each one individually? Uh, because we've got.
I got one in this new business, though. I guess we could forward.
Yeah, because we have four of them. Actually.
Is.
However you want to handle it, I was just trying to do it for.
Let's say, are we okay sending this one to a public hearing? You want to make a motion for that one?
Uh, which one? The one that's yours.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we we refer um, chapter one ninety-seven zoning article, you know, thirteen thirteen conditional uses, one ninety-seven dash ninety-seven required finding subsection of manufactured home parks, the proposed ordinance. I make a motion that we refer to a public hearing.
Yeah, can I get a second?
What date for the public hearing and what time, please?
Do we, other way to set, don't we have set dates then?
It was.
June twenty-six?
Twenty-six at.
June twenty-six o'clock.
Thank you.
Do you say, is someone going to second? Do we want to make it some other action?
Uh, I am I'm ambivalent about this only because I feel that if if we add something that has to do with, let me see if I can find what I wrote so that I don't just talk off the top of my head. Um, it it has to do with. Oh, are we on a deadline? Let me ask that question, Khalil. Are we on a deadline in terms of the affordable housing aspect of this?
Now, there's no, there's no firm deadline, no.
Okay, um, in trying to because my issue is that there were so many things that were not clear in that presentation that happened at the library that I'm ambivalent about okaying is to go to public hearing. Even though um, the meeting that we had, it seemed that it was so over everyone's head in terms of them fully understanding it. I don't know if that public hearing that we have is going to make it any different. I'm not sure what kind of homework still needs to be done on this. What do you think, Joe?
I I think that uh, going along with what you you said, um, I agree. There was a lack of understanding on the part of the residents that were here from the park. Is there any way that we could do some work to educate them on some of the terms because they were asking questions and we didn't have the technical ability to be able to show them what lot coverage meant. And uh, I think it would be a simple thing. They'd probably really appreciate it.
And if we came back and we said that um, part of the issue is, let's say that um, BPW do at least fifty percent of what it needs to do far as water is concerned. And then we look at this.
So then they would already be getting the relief. Uh, and that's supposed to start soon, correct?
I I don't know.
Wow, it it's started, but it's it's off to a very slow start.
Right. And what would be the purpose of requiring fifty percent be completed?
It 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 looks like it's commitment on the part of the owner. It it feels like.
Owner has nothing to do with that.
Whatever his name is, I don't think his name, but the bottom line is that it seems like it's drag and it seems like if we move this forward, the people still aren't getting what they feel they need, and that's my concern.
Well, let me, let me respond to both those uh, concerns. So we have had um, the Lewis Planning Commission has discussed this issue, has referred this issue to us. Um, we have had a a a meeting with the the city, the the community residents, and you both are correct. They had a lot of questions and concerns. Um, but I submit that these have been in the public domain for a while. We now have over a month before a public hearing to answer any questions, work with them, however it might be. Um, for them to be educated. I don't know what another month. I'm not sure what you guys are suggesting we do if we don't, that we can't do in the next month.
Khalil, there, the uh, folks out there are saying that they don't really know where their lots are. They don't understand what it is they're actually renting to put their modular or their their trailer on, that the, there is some confusion between some of the uh, uh, maps. And I think if we could figure out exactly what's going on there, uh, it's it's a tough nut to crack.
Yep.
Uh, it's an old park. We're trying to make things better for the folks out there. They're now residents of Lewis, and we want to give them the same quality of life out there that we benefit from here in Lewis. And I just think that it 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 doesn't hurt to slow it down. And we're not saying we're not going to do it.
Let me ask you then, because I'm not, I'm open to doing whatever the council feels is you know, best for the for the citizens of Lewis and in this case particularly the Donovan Smith Park. I'm just, what do you propose we do? You know, by delaying it, what do you, what are you proposing we do to kind of clean up this up?
Well, I was hoping that perhaps the uh, proposed uh, lot uh, setbacks, those types of things in the maps could be looked at perhaps by the uh, planning commission again to try to work through some of that, to come up with a uh, a situation that would provide a better quality of life. I'm not sure. I know we said a hundred and thirty lots. But is that something if we're trying to create open space for the people, we're saying that people need open spaces where they live. They're not there in that park right now. And we've got thirty children living out there. They need open space. And I think what we need to say is we're not providing just workforce housing or uh, uh, quality workforce housing. We want to make sure that this is the best we can do for these folks. They've been out there for a long time without support.
What do we hope to accomplish, Khalil, by having another public hearing?
This, I'm I'm, a public hearing would be to have all the stakeholders come together.
Been there with us that we we.
Then what does a delay do?
But but.
Then what is a delay do?
The issue, if if I'm the way I read it from the last meeting we had and the folks that approached us afterwards, it seemed like it was totally over their head in basic stuff.
I'm just trying to follow the process we normally have here.
Have another sort of like a work, a similar type of workshop with them or. Just them?
I'm trying to get it to a point that, you know, maybe not a public hearing, but we need to have a flower, these people need to fully, and I take that term I just used. People need to understand. There's some, when.
I understand what you're saying.
Wait, 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 let me finish, honey. Let me finish.
What's the?
Uh, uh, a big pardon?
He's just asking, what's the, he's asking like, what's the forum for doing?
I'm not against what you're saying. I'm just wondering, what are you proposing?
I, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I speak for just a second, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, listening to what everyone has said.
Mm-hmm.
Picking up on what uh, councilperson elder has suggested. Uh, what I, what I think would be a logical was something I would like you all to consider is the idea of us remanding this issue to planning commission, which would pick up on what uh, councilman elder has suggested with the understanding that they would be uh, given the space and time to to study the subject matter and understand the the uh, issues of the park more in greater depth. And they are, the planning commission is the body that is supposed to make these studies and make recommendations to us. So they would be the appropriate party to do that kind of study. And so a remand is what I would suggest that we consider. I I think there were other people uh, at that workshop that weren't living out there uh, that were kind of watching that. And you know, I think if we could have a little workshop for them, even if we went out there, invited them in here, met with them, explained things to them, um, so that they really understood. You see, here's the problem. There's a lot of mistrust between the government.
Yeah.
And
I'm sorry.
consumer. And I think they look at us as, and they even said in the meeting, we're the man. Okay, and we need to develop trust with them.
You have questions?
Um, Max asking to speak. Max, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Sure.
So I don't think from a procedural standpoint that a remand was as the right mechanism. But you could ask the planning commission if you showed desire to consider other things, but it's not really a remand because we can't really have a remand until after you have a public hearing. So this isn't a remand kind of situation. So you can ask those, or if you decide to do a workshop, that's fine. But I just wanted to jump in on. I don't think this is a remand that you you're asking the planning commission to.
It's a request.
Well, consider other things, other requests.
Right. I mean, in other words, if we gave them specific instructions or requests, then that would qualify as a remand. Is that what you're suggesting, Max?
No, I'm saying it's just nomenclature. It's not a remand. You're just asking to further consider it.
Okay.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Don't use the.
So why don't we move forward and and delay a public hearing, but, and I'm happy to do that and go along with that. Uh, but I would like more clarity as to what we're thinking about doing. Is it a public workshop? Is it a private workshop, just with the residents there? I mean, what is your pleasure?
I don't know. We got to figure that part out.
Yeah, well, we're going to figure it out now.
We don't know. We actually, no.
I mean, I I'm not comfortable. I don't think it's proper to delay a public hearing without having an alternative. Or just to delay it in in in, to me, that's just delaying it indefinitely.
Let's see, I'm just the opposite. I don't think having a public here, for the heck of having a public hearing.
No, to have a public hearing is to have stakeholders comment on the proposed changes.
These folks that we talked to are so not in tune. I don't, I'm trying to think of the right.
And I'm suggesting that we we go along with what you're saying and have another meeting with them to talk in more detail about what these proposed changes would do, what they wouldn't do.
Could we agree to do that without setting a date tonight? Because it's no, no use us setting a date if we're setting a date that doesn't work for those residents.
Well, I mean, one, one thing we could do is we could put this back on the June workshop agenda to better to talk more about kind of what the options are. I think one of the things, and and you um, use the word trust. And I think that the the issue right now that I'm seeing is a, an issue of trust. And one of the conversations that that you and I had, Carolyn, was the issue of it's hard to get your head around this ordinance.
Right.
Um, and what this ordinance will do if your basic needs aren't being met. So i- if, you know, if you look at the hierarchy of needs and and you know, you have a community where they don't even have basic functioning sewer and water.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so i- it's hard for them to look beyond until there's something more there. Now, again, I don't know that a workshop or a meeting is going to to solve that. But I do think that they need to see um, a little more progress on things before they're going to to start to build trust. And I don't know how that relates to the ordinance, but I mean, that's what I took away from that meeting is, you know, we haven't done enough as a city to to gain their trust. Yeah.
Confidence, right.
True.
Well, I think we're talking about a a meeting we had, which was attended by fifteen or so residents.
Out of, uh, out of over eighty units there.
Four of them pretty much monopolized the conversation. And then after the fact, we received messages from other residents who did not share their anger and bitterness towards the city and appreciated that they're going to have um, sewer and water in eighteen months or so, appreciated having a city police presence there and appreciated code enforcement. So, but you have a problem with that, Tim? You don't agree with that? Oh, okay.
I'm listening to.
Yeah, so I I'm saying that I think there were people who spoke very passionately there, but they were not representing the entire community. And and I hate to be blunt about it, but that's really what I learned.
I picked up on that. You know, you you're spot on with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, how, how, how are we proposing the form?
Do now.
Because I I I do agree clearly, like, we can't um,
Leave it in limbo.
If the idea is to educate ourselves or them more, then there needs to be some forum. I don't really choose a date, but we agreeable to setting another similar meeting that we had with them previously, like a workshop forum where they.
And I, I guess.
When we work with, when we used to work with parents. Let's say we're putting in a new pilot program in reading. We don't just throw it out there. I mean, and you guys didn't either. There's been a lot of work done. But we make sure they understand what we're doing. And so we would have the teachers come in and have a little private thing and share it with them. We're not there to debate with them. We're there to educate them. So let's say uh, we got an overhead projector. We laid all this stuff out. We have our ducks in a row in terms of knowing. First of all, we're not sure about, we didn't adopt the uh, setback provisions yet. And that that really threw them for a loop. They don't understand lot coverage.
Of course not.
They didn't understand. And they don't know where their lots are. How do we know these modulators are going to fit on the lots according to those specs?
Yeah, well, you'd sit there and have us talk about adding on to the module that they have, recognizing that what they have can't even accommodate adding on to it. It's kind of like, really?
But can I ask Janelle to weigh in here a little bit? Because this didn't just happen in a vacuum. And I don't think you know, we threw something together and said, hell, let's go do this. So Janelle, can you take us through a little bit about the process in which um, you looked at the 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 current code and and the and the proposed changes you made?
So I was asked to to look at this. So I looked at um, the existing lots from the nineteen seventy-four map, seventy-four, seventy-five. Um, I was also provided some surveys for other lots. So I looked at those, noticed how wide they were. I did research as to the dimensions of what um, a new single wide and double wide are, um, which is why the setbacks are proposed to be different because the width and the length of single wides, you can do a twelve if you can find it or fourteen, but then they're longer. Um, when most of those mobile manufactured homes were placed, single wides were shorter. Um, now they're they're seventy to eighty-two feet in length. So you know, based on what I was provided for surveys, the setbacks weren't going to work for you know, some of what was out there or what was going to be, could potentially be placed there. Um, again, with the double wide, double wides are typically wider, but they're actually not as long. The single wides are are skinny and long and double wides are wider and actually narrower, um, or not as long. So that's what I used to look at looking at the setbacks. Um, looking at the um, the floodplain issue, to me, that was just equity. Everybody else in the city gets to build on the floodplain. Why not here? Um, looking at the the open space, because I couldn't calculate the exact open space, but as a condition of approval, because again, this requires a conditional use. All these are proposed conditions of a conditional use, which you can add additional conditions to.
Can you explain the process so everybody gets that too?
I was going to say, this is great plan ease. You, I understand everything you're saying. But I'm going to take off my hat. I'm going to be one of those folks. And the people, the way they were responding was, what do you mean setback? Wha- what do you mean this? I'm talking elementary here. And we're talking about ordinances. And it's like, really, guys?
So that's why I started with, everybody has an imaginary box on their property where they can build. That's when I explained it. I I understand that. Um, and and that's something I think we can, we can address. And that's how I explain setbacks to everybody. Everybody has their property. They typically know where it is. And somewhere on that, you have an imaginary box that says, this is where you can build your house. And that's what your setbacks dictate. So that's what I always try to start with. And and most people do understand that, that there's a place on their property. It's imaginary box, rectangle, triangle, depending on the shape of their lot, where they. It's imaginary box, rectangle, triangle, depending on the shape of their lot, where they can place a home. And then there are other, um, extensions. Say if I want to build a detac, I want to build a shed. Well, sheds can usually, don't have to be within that imaginary box. They can be closer. Um, to a property line, because that's how we recognize things. And those all are then based on your setbacks. That's what your setbacks are, are. You know, those imaginary lines and imaginary boxes is where you can put things on your property. And that's what I, I was hope, I, I was trying to explain during that, during that workshop. Um, I do know a number of people did understand that. Um, I know, understand, not everybody did. I understand that. And, and again, staff is happy to, you know, to provide, you know, some basic information. Um, not just to them, but to everybody in the city. Um, because I know there's a number of people in the city. I, I, this is what I do every day. I explain what setbacks are. I explain what. Lot coverage is. I, I try to, you know, help people understand zoning and planning. Um, so they have a better understanding of what they can and cannot do with their property based on what the codes say.
Okay, uh, just a point that I'd like to make though. When the maps. That show the modulators are maps that. Are being used to put the water and sewer in, and they were not shown. They don't match the maps that were shown on the overhead. At the presentation, the maps that were shown on the overhead were from the nineteen seventies.
Yeah, staff didn't have access to those prior to. Now that we know they're there, we can provide those to the public and help them understand better where exactly. Um, their, their land leased areas are.
Yeah, right.
I think it needs to go back, back to the planning commission. I would like to make a motion. That this be sent back to the planning commission.
I'm just gonna.
Mass.
I, I thought, yeah.
Send it back to the planning commission. And if you could add the reasons that you sent it back to the planning commission and just summarizing some of the things. That you, that you said, if your motion is to send it back to the planning commission to.
Clarify.
To clarify and then just say what?
That is.
That you'd like clarify.
That's you. Well.
You want to help them frame it up?
Yeah, you're gonna have to clarify what.
Well, you could.
Go ahead.
Yeah. You're gonna start with the terminology that we're using, that they have no idea what we mean. Um, just as simple as setbacks, the, the, the words that we use, they have no idea what we are talking about. And that sounds simple, but it's not when you're at the other end of it.
So what would sending it back to the planning commission do to educate them? I would be supportive of having.
But it.
A, a workshop with them to kind of go through everything to answer any questions. I don't understand by sending back to the planning commission, how that educates them further.
I can go with that. I can go with that. I can go. The, the bottom line is educate, Khalil.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
And I'm fine with that. I'm.
That's where I'm coming.
Supportive of that.
So.
Joe?
Joe made a motion for the planning commission.
Okay. He did not make a motion. He's not a, he cannot, I'm.
He, oh, he did make a motion.
He made a motion?
Yeah, he did already.
And now. Help shape the motion, correct, Max?
Yes, we made a motion.
Don't you make a motion? Joe, listen.
Right. And.
We send it back to the people and get their input. We've started that level. We send it back.
Withdraw your motion and then.
You could withdraw your motion and we could send it back the way we want, which is for the people's input. Okay, that's what we're all talking about.
So you've made a motion that we send it back to the planning commission, correct? And now Max is advising that we need to put some more meat on the bone, so to speak, correct? As far as setting up what our expectations are, what our directions are. Is that right, Max?
Correct. If you want to send it back to the planning commission, you have to send it back to the planning commission and ask them to do blank, fill in the blank.
I'm gonna make a suggestion. May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I'm going to suggest that the planning commission pays attention to the, um. I'll call it a chart, a spreadsheet that describes the comparisons overview, comparing existing code versus the proposed code. And to study the effects of a reducing setbacks and the, um, uh, lot coverage. And, uh, and. And, and base their analysis on a more factual. Representation of what the lots are in the, in the park. Because as this chart says, that, um, the existing. A lot size is existing code says five thousand and the proposed code is twenty-four hundred square feet.
Is that, Max, is that first of all, before I ask Joe if he accepts that amendment, is that acceptable as a framing?
But see, I'm.
Yeah, that's sufficient.
Joe, do you accept Tim's suggestion of the code?
Okay, Tim, could you recap that for me? Just stay. So we're asking for.
What we're trying to do per Max's instructions is we're trying to give, uh, more instructions that will be included in. Uh, by sending it back to planning commission. Okay, so we would, I, I'm suggesting that they look at this particular chart that was included in the. Um, in the workshop. And it's the existing code versus proposed. Um, I'd like to suggest that they, uh, consult with the, uh, fire department. And make sure that, uh, that the reduced setbacks are not creating a more hazardous. Uh, condition for, for the residents in the park. Um, I'm, I have a general sense that the comparison of. The county code. Is, um. Well, we are, we are, what's been proposed is more a reflection of what the county code allows. And I am suggesting.
The county code only allows thirty-five percent lot coverage, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it is.
We're recommending sixty-five percent lot coverage on lots that are smaller than they require in Sussex County. So. I, I, the setbacks may not be achievable.
Right. And of course, you spoke to the idea of open space too. And, uh. You know, that is one of our goals as a city, right?
Well, we have two sides of this coin right now. We're talking about what we want the planning commission to do. And on the other half of that, we have. Khalil talking about what we need to do to educate the people. So what part of this are we going to go after?
We have a motion on the floor from, like, Joe Elder.
If we would have a workshop now. For the, uh. People there. We don't have the right information we need to even share with them yet.
But then can it?
Because once the planning commission. Picks this back up to us, then we'll be able to go to them and say, look, we've amended this. So, and, and here's, we're going to explain it to you.
Joe, can you explain, can you be specific about what we don't have right now that? I mean, Janelle, do, do you feel like you have everything you need? Or did you have everything you need to craft these proposed changes?
To craft the proposed changes, I believe I had everything I needed because I had the old maps, some of, some examples of existing lots. Um, I had multiple codes that I looked at. Um, so I thought I provided, um, a, a good example of what actually better reflects what's. Out there, um, especially with lot size and some of the, and some of potential with the reduction in the setbacks. Um, based on, you know, my history of, of the development.
Let me, cause to, to address Joe's concern, I just want to make, because one thing I learned, Joe, and I think, I think you might find this instructive too, because I just learned about it the other day. Is, let's say hypothetically. Cause your concern is about surveys and proper maps and such. So. If in fact hypothetically, we approve these changes. And, and therefore the conditional use process, correct me if I'm wrong, requires the applicant, which would be Donovan Smith. To submit surveys of, of everything that would be current surveys.
Correct.
To the lots.
Correct.
Correct. It's not a requirement.
A site plan is required as part of the conditional use application.
Right. But we're, we, but right now the park owner does not have that requirement upon him, correct?
Yes, because he doesn't need to make an application for conditional use.
Right, but he's not, but we're two.
No, they have, the applicant, the applicant has not made an application for conditional use.
Cannot put another unit in the park at this time because he doesn't have potable water and he doesn't have sewer service. And we're two years, we're two years out from being able to have city services in eighteen to twenty-four months. So again, what is, what I think Joe started to quit his statement with was, or Carolyn did, I'm sorry, with, what's the rush? Why are we, why are we pushing this along at this point in time?
Well, one thing I want to clarify, they, they do have potable water. It doesn't necessarily taste good, but.
I'm sorry.
They're getting it tested under public.
I apologize. Withdraw that statement.
So I, I just don't, I don't want.
I withdraw that statement. I apologize.
I know from their perspective, it's not potable because it doesn't taste good.
I apologize. I, yes, I withdraw that statement. But we, it is a fact that they don't have a sewer system that works.
Right.
That's.
That, that's an outright fact. Yes.
Well, you know, I, I know this is an important matter, obviously, as we've been, we've been discussing. We have now kind of defined two separate ways for, we need to, and we need to. Decide how we're going to move forward.
And, and I, I apologize, my newness.
That's my, that's my job to just kind of pull us back to what we're moving this along. So are we, are we amenable to?
I, I think the question is, do we want to go the planning route or do we want to go the workshop route?
Maybe both. If, if.
Oh, Max has something.
If I may.
Go.
Sort of the procedural, I'm just doing this procedural. Generally, you would get, you would have your, the planning commission is acted. You would then have a public hearing by the council and then you would be able to remand it back, right? And so we've remanded, we're, we're. While we're not remanding, we are asking the planning commission to reconsider at least or consider new items. May I suggest that if you had the, I'm going to call it the civic meeting. And then you scheduled a public hearing. Right? You could do all that in a, in a organized fashion. You can always then send it back to the planning commission because. Um, and you would also have a second bite at the apple if, because they have to get a conditional use permit to do any expansion. So, so that seems for a procedural mechanism in the normal course.
Just for clarification, they need a conditional use to do anything on the property.
It's not expansion. It's filling existing vacant lots.
And it's even if some, if one of the current residents wants to bring in a new manufactured home, they cannot do that at this time because there is no conditional use. So there's no additions to the houses. There's no, no placement of new manufactured homes until the conditional use is granted by mayor and council.
And, and there's been no application.
Correct.
Correct. And that's, okay.
But they wouldn't be able to meet the standards under. If they have.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Which is one of the reasons why we are trying to propose changes. And, and let me be clear, the changes would certainly benefit. Approximately thirty new homes that could be brought in and potentially rented. As affordable housing to approximately a hundred or so people, which is certainly a policy priority of mine. I think most of the people on the council. But the other part is the changes also impact current residents who right now can't replace. A, a mobile home.
Right.
Unless it is the exact same mobile home and the mobile homes they have now are antiquated. They're, the, the single wides are pretty much aren't available. In addition, with these changes, they would be able to. Add a patio, add a deck and do some improvements to their property. So this benefits everyone in the park. And it particularly benefits a, um, the residents who a year ago were not part of the city. And because of the annexation, now are going to have. Eighteen to twenty-four months and have water and sewer in addition to all the other city services. So I, I would propose that these, these code changes are, are certainly worth consideration. And that's why I want it. I think they're ready to go to a public hearing, but I am. Open again to other options. And I believe we do have, we do have a, a, a motion.
Yeah, we do have a motion with some definition around what the, the instructions the planning commission would be. Do you want, does someone want to make a second on that?
June, restate the motion. So what I heard the motion was.
I was, I was asking that we, I made a motion that we, uh. Send this back to the planning commission.
For reconsider.
For further study to try and clarify. Uh, lot, uh. Lot definition, where they are. Uh, in size and setbacks. Uh, before it come, comes back to us to be approved. It would have to go to public hearing, of course, before that, right?
So you're saying send it to the planning commission and then?
Yeah.
Somebody help me.
Are you saying send it? Nah, we, we're all on the same sheet, you know, Joe. Uh, you're saying send it to the planning commission again?
Yes.
And then do the public hearing? Is that what you're saying?
That or a workshop, yes. That's what we'd have to decide because if we go to public hearing. I think we need to sit down in a more comfortable setting.
Well, a, the public hearing is that kind of thing. Okay. If we go back where we started on this, if we take it to a public hearing, it doesn't mean it has to go any further. It's. It's the same thing of saying, we need to have a workshop and we need to hear what they have to say. If we take it to a public hearing, you know.
So why don't we?
Consider and so why, why, why don't we go where we started?
If it's a requirement of, if it's a thing about education, why don't you withdraw the, the motion?
Withdraw the planning.
And move to the workshop so that you can get interaction with the residents.
Well, let's take it back out of the planning commission because, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Tim, and please, please recognize. That there are a lot of things in there that you're saying that the planning commission should look at. But by the same token, my concern is more with the people. As opposed to that aspect of it. I'm not altogether for sending it back to the planning commission as I am for making sure that we can. Communicate with the folks that this has an effect on. So whatever the heck it takes to do that, that's where I am.
Do you want to throw out your, your motion or you want to, we still haven't heard a second.
Yeah. Oh, I thought I seconded him.
You seconded his motion?
Yeah, I did.
You didn't, but if you didn't, you need.
Okay, so we have.
That way.
I, I'm sorry if I misheard that. So Joe has made a motion to, to send it back to planning commission. Tim has given definition around what the instructions the planning commission are, and that's a second.
Wait, do we, I'm not clear on Tim's, on his clarifika. Tim, you, I caught a lot of it, but then at the end you added. More. I mean, you, you have the comparison there that you wanted that.
Public document.
You wanted that.
Right.
Further study. I don't, I, I would suspect they did that already, but maybe they didn't.
Well, I, I.
And, and can.
Look, for purp, for purposes of giving guidance to the planning commission. We have a motion and we have Tim, Tim's conditions. Tim, can you articulate specifically one, two, three, four, what those conditions would be? And so we can make it part of the motion.
The ca, the count, the planning commission needs instructions.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, uh, I'll try my best, okay? Um, I would like the planning commission to, uh, consider, uh, open space in the park. I would like them to consider the safety factors as it relates to, uh, fire. Uh, by consulting with, I'm suggesting the fire department. There might be people who are experts in that area. I'm not aware of, but. I'll define them as the fire department. Um, and I have also suggested that, uh, the. Uh, the. Proposed code. The changes to the code, uh, need to be looked at more, more closely. And if, do, do I need to specify which aspects of the proposed code? Max, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm talking about, uh, a lot size. I'm speaking about lot frontage, lot coverage, setbacks. Separation, building height and, uh, build within the floodplain.
Okay, so that's the motion and the second with that definition. Uh, we want to. Is this because Max, it's a rope? Do we need a roll call for this then? Because it's.
Yes.
Okay.
You don't need to articulate reasons in the record, but you need a roll call.
Okay, so, so Joe, you made the motion. You want to just, so what, what do you, what you have to do is to say.
Why?
Yes or no? And, and why you'd like to make this.
You, you don't need to do that here, but you don't need to articulate reasons or record. Yes or no is fine. Just each person votes.
I thought I was asking, okay.
I thought he said, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he did.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's the zoom. I said you do not.
Sorry. Okay, so all in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, um, for, it's like record then show four, one. Uh, but so the motion is to send it to, uh, planning commission and, um. We'll get more definition around the, on the minutes while what, uh. The instructions are to LPC. Okay. Thank you, folks, for that patience on that one. Okay, so the, the next two, um, to Carolyn's point, I'd, uh, I'd like to just take. Thank you, folks, for that patience on that one. Okay, so the, the next two, um, to Carolyn's point, I'd uh, I'd like to just take as a consent. So the first one is public hearing on architectural, to look at the core values for each park.
Mm hmm.
And then the other um, is the, to examine the disbandment of the joint site review. Uh, and to put that review back under LPC. Uh, so can I get a motion to send those to to public hearing?
I make a motion.
All right, second.
I'll second it.
I just need a date and time, please.
Oh.
It's and location.
It's the twenty.
June twenty-sixth.
Twenty.
Six o'clock.
Right.
Margaret Rawl, Margaret Rounds. Okay, motion second. We, do we have that?
We.
Motion second.
I seconded.
All in favor?
I.
I, okay. Next, I five, uh, presentation possible action regarding ordinance to amend municipal code to see Lewis chapter one ninety-seven zoning one ninety-seven dash forty-five. Use restrictions uh, and one ninety-seven attachment one table permitted uses and structures to establish regulations for beekeeping. So this one's a bit, one that's gone to a public hearing.
Right.
Um, can I get uh, a motion to a, a, approve or deny this one? And then uh, we, we can get it some discussion.
I'll make a motion uh, that we approve uh, this ordinance. To uh, allow to amend the municipal code to allow uh, beekeeping.
Okay, um, can we get a second and then second?
Second.
Okay, um, I, I, let's start some discussion. I did have one question I wanted to bring up on. So it says, um, you need a permit to do this from this, are we in a good place if we say? That the city reserves the right to restrict the number of permits? Or is that, is that okay? This does have broad language like that?
You, you can put a restriction on it. I, I put some language around the reason for it, at least in, during your discussion, but it's for certain reasons or whatever, but.
Yeah, so I would, I, I'd like to make some kind of proposal that the, the city reserves a right to restrict the number of permits based on. Enforcement, ability to enforce the, the code. I don't know. I mean.
Is, is your thinking to put a restriction on the total number of permits or a number of permits per individual?
Total, total number.
Total number.
I don't.
Location is.
I don't know that we need to, but I mean, I'm just putting it out.
You're just putting a condition. There's nothing wrong with that.
Could be said for. For safety? I don't know.
I mean, your, your, your concern is, I think it's valid that. Suddenly we have three hundred bee hives and and we can't, and we can't control, we can't manage that process.
Right.
Okay.
Per individual.
Property.
For property. Okay, there you go.
Right.
All right.
That's pretty in the code.
Right. And what I think what we're, I'm sorry.
Is a uniform requirement?
A what requirement?
Interstate code, there's a uniform requirement that said you can't restrict.
It says you can't, there's a uniform requirement state code that says if it's a use or i- if you're in a particular zone, you can't say to. One person using that zone. Yeah, so I think the uniformity requirement will restrict you from.
Okay.
Be, will prohibit you from being able to restrict the number of permits. But as Jen, as Janelle says, any individual who adopts that use of beekeeping is limited to three hives.
Okay.
Further limit.
And I would just say to the public's, uh, you know, benefit that this, there is language in here about being registered with the state apiarist and there's. There is a high bar to be able to do this, so.
You can always limit the number of bees per hive.
Okay. All right, so.
Sounds like it's in there.
I withdraw. Okay, so.
It sounds like it's all.
Yeah, I withdraw. Okay, so we've got a, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Do we want to just call to a vote then or is there any further discussion? Do we, this one, we do need to roll call? Okay, Carolyn, you made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion, but with the, with the understanding that it, that it would be monitored. It's all I have to say.
Okay, yeah, that's I agree with that. So, uh, go ahead, Tim, you, yes or no and then what?
Uh, yeah, I'll vote to uh, approve this and uh. Yeah, I think it's, it's interesting that it gives uh, it expands hobbyist's ability to. Enjoy beekeeping inside the city limits.
Yeah, I'll also approve for, for the reason that uh, hobbyists, as, as my colleague just mentioned. This has been an increasing hobby for many people and it has been proven. Also over the years that uh, it can be done in a very safe and effective way. And it produces honey for a lot of people.
And we like.
There you go.
And who's, what was wrong with honey?
Joe?
For the hobbyists. Uh, it gives uh, citizens uh, things to look forward to and to do that are healthy. And uh, it's environmentally probably pretty sound.
And I, I too vote, uh, yes, and I'll just add to that, um, this, we mentioned this to the secretary of agriculture recently and he was very supportive of this. As a, an idea for increasing pollinators. So I think it's a good, good change and a update to our code. Um, so that's five yeses and so um. Sumner Crosby can get, get his beekeeper, bee hives out of hiding. Now, we thank, we do thank Sumner for his input on this. He's a master beekeeper and there are quite a, as Cleo says, a growing uh, growing hobby, so. The next one up and we, we appreciate uh, for their, their patience is J one, is presentation possible action regarding um. B C one dash twenty-three parcel consolidation to combine two parcels for Riverside Park and Marina. The properties are located at nine oh nine Pilot Town Road. And um, I think everyone has this here and I, uh, we have to see Janelle's um, description. I think the consolidation to parcels will eliminate setback issues for some of the existing buildings that are located.
Right.
Um, but uh, there'll be more steps to take uh, uh, following this. So it's a simple matter of just that um.
Consolidation.
Consolidating lots.
Consoliding the lots.
Right.
Brings a lot of nonconformities into conformance.
Right.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Yeah, please have a question about.
Yeah, go ahead.
And my question had to do with uh, here we have a plot map of this particular area. And it says that uh, the buildings will be looked at at a later time. Uh, basically, but I just want to have some understanding as we move forward and this goes through planning. We just got done talking about Donovan Smith. Uh, we just got done talking about uh, well setbacks. I would assume, having had some experience with this in the city, that you get grandfathered in. If you have uh, been there. And if the building gets moved, you lose that uh, old setback and you have to go with the new one. So in looking at this, I think, you know, I look at this and I see that there are some buildings that are maybe three feet off. That have maybe been there for ten, fifteen, twenty years. They're modulars. Are they going to be able to stay? Because they should be grandfathered in according to the old setbacks before we even move ahead. We, we should have that understanding.
So some of these buildings do not have building permits. Some of these containers were moved around the site. So staff is working with the applicant and their attorney to get full compliance of this site plan. The shark tank portion of the site plan of the property, the site plan for the shark tank was approved this afternoon. Um, there'll be another site plan that they will be working with staff on to address other issues that are going on with this, this site. But part of the reason for the need for the parcel consolidation is things that were done without. Formal um, acceptance.
Okay.
So this is basically cleaning up.
This is attempting to clean up some issues that exist. Some non, some, some of them are nonconformities, absolutely. This property also does not have any road frontage, so it is landlocked, so it'll actually provide it with um. With, with actually the road frontage on, on uh, Pilot Town Road. So it actually cleans that up, which is actually very good. Um, it addresses some of the setback issues and it addresses especially the, regarding the one building that, that does not have a building permit.
Okay.
And which building is that, Janelle? I.
I believe the applicant's attorney is here and I.
Yeah, Mr. Will, you want to come on up?
I'm still thinking about assessors being dodo birds or something. Stuck on that.
Yeah, so is mushroom.
To answer your question, it's the building uh, furthest down closest to the line that's being removed. That's the one that was most recently built.
Owl shaped building.
Yeah, the closest to your.
Oh, this one?
That, yeah, yeah. And so we're, and, and um. Uh, council members elders comments were well taken. There are some other issues that um, we have been working with the. City with Glenn and Janelle to clean up. This was one in that stage. Take, get rid of that line. So it removes any setback issues there.
Right, and that will be accomplished by removing the property line.
Absolutely.
Right, so that.
Just taking one step at a time. Uh, there's a permit issue there and we're having FEMA look at it because floodgates were put in and we got to get the city. Sign off on that one way or the other or tear it down. And we're in the process of dealing with that. Um, and there's one other issue about the uses of the containers and we're dealing with that. So we are, the city's being.
So you're in a good place here.
Yeah, it's a unique piece of property and that was landlocked. The history of it's kind of interesting why it's that way, but um, I won't get into that.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is all you're at, that's all you need tonight?
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
That's great.
Get rid of that line. So it'll be one big.
All right.
Both own the same thing.
Okay.
Owned by the same person. They're here to nice storming his wife pepper.
Okay.
Well, then I should make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Richard, is it ready to make a motion?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that uh, the council moves to consolidate. Uh, the parcels, the two parcels into one text map, three, three, five, dash four point zero, dash two point zero one. And uh, six point zero one.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Second. Uh, then we just, we can just.
Thank you.
Uh, street frontage and uh, results in nonconformity. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that? Street coverage and lock conformity.
And, and results in nonconformity.
Results in nonconformity. Okay, yes, that's why.
Okay, uh, Tim or Carol? Again, you can rely on.
Whatever he said.
Joe? Yes, and you're relying on what they said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I vote yes as well for rectifying a nonconforming situation.
Exactly. Uh, I, I also vote yes and uh, for this reason stated by uh.
Everybody.
Everybody else. Okay. Thank you for that and uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
J two, uh, this is present case possible action regarding public hearing, uh.
That's another one.
Yeah, so this is uh, lands four twenty-three for site plan for the construction of new parking lot. Uh, this is setting a public hearing uh, for. What just came out of joint site review? Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Cleo second, Cleo got a second on it.
That's what you did.
Yeah, Carol, Carolyn.
Yeah.
Carol made a motion, Cleo made a second, all in favor?
I.
I, I, okay. So we got J three next, present this possible action request from the history book festival to allow food trucks. And uh, the date here is September twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's September thirtieth.
Okay. Great, that's why I said it that way. That's why I said it that way. Make it sure.
Come on, Jen.
Yeah, okay, we got it.
And, and now the parking lot is described now as in being in the Rollins parking lot here. Is that correct?
Yes, and this was the letter we sent.
Yeah, I jam it, yeah.
Okay, great. So let's just make sure we get the.
The letter that went to her said the twenty-fourth.
No, 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 I, that's the one I sent.
Okay.
And Jen, the other change that I noticed, and this was just passed out before the meeting, is that um, that in your, the letter dated. Whatever it is, uh, stated that there would be the dedicated parking lots.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
And now it says in the Rollins Center, right? That's where the dedicated parking spaces are.
Because last year as well. But then last year, we also had um, them over on um. And we're not doing that this year.
So it'll only be in the Roll, in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we've since um, contracted with a coffee vendor to be inside the library. So we're not going to have.
Oh, good.
In the morning.
Okay.
Good, good, good.
Okay, so again, the request is for up to five trucks, or not more than five trucks. They'll be located at the Rollins Center parking lot. And this is for Saturday, September third, and will run between eleven and two.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve the food trucks?
I make a motion.
Motion, second? Joe? All in favor?
I.
Hi. Okay.
I do have a question.
Good.
I have a question. Uh, are you all addressing trash removal?
We always have.
Yeah, I started to say.
Okay, but you, you'll take care of that. Is that correct? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and speaking of processes like that, though, I would just encourage y'all to keep thinking about putting a process in place for this. So we don't have to. Exactly.
So we, then you wouldn't have a reason to come see him.
Right now, I'm.
Are you, are you ready? Are you going to rep the next one too? This is a request from the Lewis Historical Society. No, you're out. Okay. Okay, so we got next one. Is there someone from the store side or we go? Okay, this one is for June third and fourth. And this, these are going to be from nine AM to four, and this is to support the Mid-Atlantic Sea Glass and Coastal Art Festival.
Right.
Uh, which will take place that weekend to benefit the historical society, okay? So they'll have a number of vendors on LHS campus, but the food trucks will be.
Parked in.
Two on Saturday, uh, only one on Sunday, and they'll be parked on LHS leased land. Uh, which is by the US Life Saving Station, only food, no alcoholic beverages. So can I get a motion to approve the? June third and fourth, nine AM to four PM for up to two trucks on L, LHS's. Carolyn's got a motion? Your second?
Second.
Second, Cleo, all in favor?
I.
Okay, I think Carol's going to set a record for motions.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so this one is uh, J five, uh, discussion of possible action on the commitment of funds for the purchase of a Forest Street Preserve. So just a little context here and hopefully folks in the community have seen this. Um, but the uh, the GLF um, has put out a um, open space initiative. They have open space. Uh, alliance and this is part of that. Um, our former mayor Ford has come to us individually and as a group. And has, has asked the city to participate in this and um. Cleo, do you want to uh, take us forward here?
Yeah, no, um. Um, the mayor outlined um, uh, um, some of the developments that we've had thus far, but they are. Uh, former mayor Jim Ford i- is leading an initiative uh, through the Greater Lewis Foundation. To uh, and they have created an open space alliance, uh, uh, five oh one C three, I believe. And the purpose is to raise eighteen point three million dollars to purchase two properties. One is the Fourth Street Forest Preserve, which is on Fourth Street, approximately a little over thirty acres. The other is outside the city limits, but not too far. I always get the name wrong, Jim, you.
Don't say it.
Ardegran and, or the formerly known as the Miller Farm, but Ardegran. Uh, that is a little over eighty acres, I believe. And um, as Councilman uh, Richard referenced earlier, this is an open space initiative. This is. Part of our comp plan to preserve opens, open space and. Um, this is an ambitious project. The, the money to be, must be raised by the end. Of December twenty twenty-four with a possibility of a six month extension if it's not raised by then. So this is going to be a, a, um, a joint effort between public funding as well and, and private funding. And so we're here to discuss whether, you know, and what and if the city wants to do in terms of supporting this effort.
Okay.
And it's specific to the Fourth Street Preserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, when we get to the motion, I will make that.
Okay.
I mean, if you're ready.
You can make.
I'm ready to make a motion, yeah. So. I move that the city pledge five hundred thousand dollars to the Open Space Alliance. Um, on the condition that those funds be dedicated to the Fourth Street Forest Preserve.
Absolutely, I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second? Uh, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? No, okay.
Jim didn't vote.
I, I thought we were, we were going to have a discussion time. Are we not going to have a?
He just.
We, he just did.
Yeah.
You want to go right ahead?
Yeah.
We will never cut you short. Go right ahead. We're listening.
I, I'll, I'll go ahead and vote with everyone else. That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay. Let the record show it's by unanimously.
I didn't want you to stick.
All right, so we appreciate that. We know it's uh, Jim, I appreciate you taking this up and there's a, there's a long, there's a long way to go. Uh, so it's going to be a, a hard, hard journey, but um, hopefully the community will get behind this and um, the, the, the city will be here to help you.
I will also add that uh, on Wednesday night at Lewis Library at six thirty.
Right.
There is a um, a, a meeting. There is a um, a a meeting, a public meeting about this and explaining the, the campaign and what it's gonna entail and. There'll be many more follow-up uh, meetings like this as well to kind of engage the community.
Okay. All right, with that, um, before we adjourn, as I said in the beginning, we we will take uh, public comment. Uh, so I don't see anyone yet online, but we'll give that. Mr. Quill, come on up.
It is Rick Quill, four seventy East Marcus Street. Kudos, Tim and Joe.
Thank you.
Birthday today.
Happy birthday. Self cars.
Sing us some song, or lead us some song.
Self cars or class. So when it's back there. Seeing all those fine officers and I look around at the fine city employees. And I have greatest thing for Jim Ford. So this contribution from the city, I'm not unopposed to that. But I'll quote from maybe the, who was the uh, Brokeback Mountain, I can't quit this comp plan, I just can't. So I I had said something to somebody and I I don't probably won't take legs, but I'm gonna plant a, I'm gonna plant a flag on a hill. And it's about affordable workforce housing, which I fought for for years. Ice House. Other parts of this town. I even fought within, and that fought, maybe that's too strong a word, been advocate for it, even to Sussex County. And I'll be honest with you, I never thought it was any, any serious. Effort by elected officials, never. In fact, when it's concerning the Ice House. I had a long-term city employee email, he wanted to remain anonymous and said, the city fathers never have any intentions. Of going down that road of affordable workforce housing. About a month or so goes down Atlanta, so I got on the Zoom, particularly with the affordable workforce housing. Healthcare industry, BB Hospital, School District. Did anybody hear any of that? They can't recruit. People because the people who they recruit, another decent salaries cannot afford to live in Lewis. Or the surrounding areas. They have to find them housing in Dover. Am I mistaken when I, did I misread that? Did I mishear that?
Milford, Wilmington even.
So here's my flag on the hill. How many acres were we just talking about? By the way, I don't oppose that, but we have fifty-four percent of open space. Am I wrong on this comp plan? Did I read it wrong? Maybe another town has fifty-four percent open space. So my comment is, how many acres were the total between Fourth Street and other? Why don't we form a committee saying, let's talk about a percentage of that being, we we, the city will participate. But let's talk about dedicating ten or fifteen acres. To affordable workforce housing. So if anybody doesn't know what affordable workforce housing and in pass uh, uh, consideration to developers. It required about fifteen percent of the units. I was gonna jot, when I was doing Ice House, I said I'll go further, I'll do twenty-five percent. I'm talking about one hundred percent of this land dedicated to affordable workforce housing. And a committee of retiring people down here, because our community is mostly sixty-six or older. When, when, that beautiful story about um, Massachusetts and and Eastmark, that's right down the block from me. Thank God, there was an officer there. Well, I I've always said this, I would love to have a, I'd love to have a city employee, any city policeman, any teacher, any nurse living next to me. I'm just, I I'm just, why don't we direct our energy to doing something in this town besides spinning our wheels on. On issues that are not gonna be, they're not gonna be solved, they're not. Train left the station, I'll park it, left, done. I best you, there would be people in this community who are retired engineers, architects. And if we could carve out a piece of ground, we could devote a hundred percent, we could get, and I would, I I'd go further. Put your money where your mouth is, government. Wave, wave permitting fees, wave impact fees, wave, do a number of different things, make these things so affordable. That you have teachers and nurses and and city workers and policemen in this community, in this community. Look at your comp plan. Read the core values, read at the end where they had, you had a survey of the people in this town, you had surveys. I remember about eighty or ninety people. Number three issue, diversity, workforce, affordable workforce housing. Affordable workforce housing, affordable workforce housing. And I I know that you're talking about that, that mobile home, the the park up there, I forget the name of it. And they're willing to maybe talk to you about that, that's fine. And I know that, you know, over here between Kings Highway and Savannah, it's gonna be some units over there. I don't know, I don't, I think there are, they're gonna be condominium units or whatever. I'm talking about single-family homes. For a young family with children. And I know, I hear the prices of first square, square foot cost on construction, that's all nonsense, that's builders making a ton of money. I bet you if we all put our mind down, this isn't something that could be achievable. We need young people and young families in this community. That's all I got.
All right, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else? Jim, come on up.
Jim Ford, nine ten Savannah Road, and I'd just like to thank council for your action this evening to support the Open Space Alliance. And also like to thank the staff and uh, Mr. Mandalas for his work as well and look forward to working with. About this whole process and making it all happen. So appreciated very much. You've set the, a good bar for us now um, to go. Fourth, seeking funding from other, other sources and uh, it's really great that city's on board, looking for a good partnership with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your service, Jim. Okay, any, Joe, come on up. Just give, give us a, your name and just. Yeah.
I named Joe Quill.
Joe.
I'm an older brother of Rick.
Oh, okay.
I have a rental property at four oh one East Marcus Street. And uh, behind. The uh, property that's there, there is another lot, which is basically landlocked. I talked to my neighbor to try and combine our lots and rotate them to have access to Massachusetts Avenue. Uh, is not in any agreement on doing anything uh, in behind my lot. Uh, Midland Avenue extended. The paper street, there's a ditch there and I've talked uh, with Emery Downs and. And Troy O'Donnell about uh, filling in the ditch.
Oh.
To get back to my lot. There is a drain line, it drains water, I guess, from the streets. And it goes back to the wetlands, uh. The ditch, it's, I don't know, four, five hundred feet along into the wetlands. And what I, my suggestion was to put a, extend the pipe back. And fill it in with dirt and make a driveway to get to some access to my lot. And um. I don't know if there's any questions on what I'm proposing, I don't think. Probably either said it couldn't be done.
Is the, is your, are you petitioning the city to do this for you? Is that the?
It's, it's a city right-of-way, um, where the ditch is within a city right-of-way. So Char- Charlie has provided the, the parameters for the analysis and design work that would need to be done. For GMB to review. Yes.
Okay.
Oh, so, okay, well, we need to know that first, right?
Okay, and you've received those, uh, Mr. Quill?
I was coming down here today. I, I was gonna ask to have some parameters because I uh. When I bought the property about six years ago, Mirrorstone is the engineering work, where the survey work. Evan Womar has done the soil analysis of the lot and the ditch. And um, Roger Gross uh, said he wanted to. Wait, I got approval. From the city to go forward, because then I have to, as far as I know, have to, once I get the design work done. Um, then. Emery, I think, would appoint. Evan Womar to submit to Denrec and Army Corps of Engineers were viewed.
So, so the, the process we discussed was before. Anything can come before city council. We need an analysis done and and a design to show that. Um, the, the requested alteration of the ditch wouldn't cause any drainage or flooding. Elsewhere, so that, that is what needs to be done from an engineering perspective before. You know, we can even bring it forward to you all to, to make that assessment. I mean, there, there's also the, the. The other question of, I mean, it could be designed and um, you know, anything can be engineered, but. Di- is it something the city wants to do? And that, you know, that, those are things that you you'll have to make that decision. But until y- you have a sense of. How it would be done and whether or not it could be done without affecting adjacent properties, it it's. There's not enough information to.
We're just listening, man, right?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
And at the end of Midland Avenue in Massachusetts, there's. Uh, a pipe, I think it's about twelve inches round, it's at the bottom of the ditch. And in the evaluation that I had, uh, I think there is eleven inches or twelve inches of water that's. It's in the ditch and that ditch goes back to the wetlands, so I can foresee anywhere where. Extending that pipe, which the water is going back to the wetlands, is doing any damage to anything. And the design work, I, you know, yes, I just got something. To give to my engineer and he's, he didn't want to proceed with doing the design work, was possibly to do that. Until we got approval or recommendations on how to go forward. But I don't believe that that water that comes there, it just. The pipe ends right in Massachusetts and extending it back to my property. It's just passing the water from right in that ditch back and it it, from the street to the uh, to. End of my property is basically a hundred and twenty feet. And ditch keeps going back, continues. Uh, right behind all the uh, businesses is on Savannah Road, they have parking lots back there and it goes back. And it comes into the wetlands, which from the wetlands it goes into. As far as I know. So I don't think it's disturbing any backing up. Where it's going back to the wetlands.
That, that's, that is in the cities, right? It's not owned by Denrec?
Yeah, it, it's, it's owned by the city. Now, Denrec. Permits and Army Corps of Engineer permits will be required if, if the ditch gets filled. Um, but, but that, that's something we wouldn't deal with unless it comes to all of you to, you know.
And a clarification, the, the ditch being filled, we're not talking about like closing off the functionality. That the ditch provides, it would be, I assume with a culvert, is that what, right? Okay.
Let, let me just comment for a minute, you guys are starting to have a discussion.
You've now provided Mr. Quill with what he needs to be able to talk to his engineer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we.
Just wanna make sure I had that.
What you just said, and we were asking Charlie. Putting the pipe, extending the pipe, doesn't interfere with anything.
Well, I, I just don't.
We can't go.
Glenn's one, I don't think we're in a position tonight to make any decision. I think we, we understand is the ask, so the ask from what I understand is you wanna get. Appear on some future agenda, have a future meeting to discuss the possibility that the city would fill this in and with a engineering, with a.
Yeah, that's what you're asking, right?
Well.
I, you're putting words here now.
Well, I can't, we can't give him permission to move forward tonight with anything. I mean, that's why I'm just asking what the ask is.
Right.
The thing is.
I'm sorry.
Charlie, Charlie backs me, I guess, information today about the parameters of what to do. Is that correct?
And and it's what we talked about when we met two weeks ago.
Right, but he didn't say specifically on how to handle it. So that information I would have to give to my engineer.
Okay.
And that, that's a, a large expense just for the design work, not, not filling it in or anything, so, and he said. I need to make sure that. You know, when he does the design work, according to respects that the city requires, that I'm gonna get, you know. When I have the final design, then I, and I don't know if Emery will send a notice. To um, Evan Womar to come up with uh, the application. She, she, she did my soil analysis and everything, so now when she would have the. Uh, plan for the ditch, she would incorporate all that and she would submit that to Army Corps of Engineers and Denrec. That would be up to them, review it and say, okay, everything looks good. We don't have a problem with it and I can go forward, but I need, you know, that's what I'm asking. They're gonna, when I get the work done, they're gonna submit it to Evelyn to go forward with the plan.
No.
Well, well, it's, and we talked about this when we met, but the, the city would need to be the applicant for any permits.
Right.
But before we can even make a determination. The analysis needs to be done to demonstrate that it's not going to adversely affect any other property. So that's all the stuff that Charlie emailed to you.
Okay, well, I'm assuming.
Yeah, Char- Charlie provided you what he needs for your engineer to do and an, an analysis of. In order to determine whether or not it would adversely affect other properties.
So not, not his design, but just his analysis of it.
I mean, it.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm. I've been working on this for months and months, trying to figure out how to get.
There's a process. Process driven.
I'll just say what I sent today to Joe is, you know, step-by-step instructions on how the design should be done, what parameters it should be based on. The first thing that needs to be done is your engineer needs to determine what the drainage area is that empties into that ditch. And I wouldn't do a single bit of design until I sign off and Emery signs off on what that drainage area is. Once the drainage area is determined and we approve it, then you can move on to what's a rather typical design. When you fill in the ditch, you determine what the culvert pipe sizing must be, you look at downstream effects, it's all laid out in my email.
Okay.
Very similar to what we discussed.
What I would say, Mr. Quill is, take a look at Charlie's email and if there's anything unclear, then we're happy to make a meeting.
Sure.
With you to clarify what's not clear in his instructions that he sent you today, and I haven't had the benefit of going through it.
Right.
Yeah.
This is, talking to Emery, she said she could get me in tonight.
I said, I, I said we have public comments, so.
No problem.
Right, it wasn't it, right, it wasn't an agenda item.
Uh, what your next step is?
Right.
Okay, I'm not.
Right.
Put my name to something.
And I, and I would adhere to what Charlie said is, you know, don't spend any until you he's to give you the next, you know.
Well, I'm happy to get his information.
Yeah, exactly.
My engineer.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Right. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quill. All right, Aaron, we'll, we'll bring you up and we'll make that the end uh, tonight.
Makes, makes sense. I, I have some follow ones. Um, so uh, going back to the charter amendments, um, if the county is trusted enough to do the assessments, why isn't the city trusted enough to handle appeals of those assessments? Wouldn't those assessments be the same thing, the same process? Um, there were several public comments worried about losing local control. And I'm just wondering why if the county does the assessment, why the appeal process couldn't still be done locally?
My idea.
I guess I can answer that, that the, the, the county code sets up the appeal process. If you're, if you're doing this, if you're using the county's assessments, and they don't provide for a local um, appeals board, you have to use the counties, it's just, it's just a matter of code.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a thought, um, the, my next question is, um, I, I kind of want to extend a professional courtesy here. When Donovan Smith was annexed into Lewis, it was annexed in with eighty eight homes, there has been five demolitions since then. Uh, what I was told, four to five, so you're looking at eighty three to eighty four. So it's not going to be thirty homes that are added to Donovan Smith, you're looking at more like fifty homes added to Donovan Smith. And so my question to that is, and it's, it's not a challenge, it's a legitimate question. Um, why does the city of Lewis think that they can corral Ken Burnham? When jurisdictions in New York, when jurisdictions in Ohio, and when Sussex County itself has struggled to control him? Might I remind you, he has a community in the western side of Sussex County that does not have water right now. And is there a plan in place to hold Mr. Burnham accountable?
Well, the MOU defines largely what his requirements are, and that's managed by the BPW. And as you may recall, when they were annexed in, the city is not a party to that MOU.
Uh, I'm more so thinking of commercial businesses that are operating, specifically a business known as MR Hunter. Um, my understanding is that it's a residential area, um, and that business has been operating. Uh, you can see uh, probably a lineup of fifteen screen doors, uh, fifteen regular wooden doors all outside of one of the uh, homes.
Aware of that. Familiar.
If he doesn't know about it, we don't know about it.
Yeah, I figured I just put that out there and another.
That's the company name, right?
It, it's MR Hunters.
Got it, thank you.
I don't know if it's Mr. Hunter or like MR.
I understand.
Okay.
My other question is, um, uh, is there a process for handling retaliation by landlords on tenants? Because I can tell you firsthand, the problem why there is poor people that are discussing the problems with Donovan Smith right now is there are some residents that see the way that the city sees things. But there are a large majority of residents right now that fear retaliation from Ken Burnham and fear that they will be evicted from that park. If they speak up with me, if they speak up with Sub Yor E, or if they speak up with the city of Lewis. So not necessarily a question, well, wondering if there's, if there's something for the landlord.
Do you know of any laws that protect that?
Well, sure, there, there, there are lots of state code that, that, that govern, I mean, this, this park has to be, has to be permitted to begin with. And there's a, a fair amount of statute, statutory laws that address how landlords can treat tenants. And this would fall under the mobile home park laws, not, not technically the landlord tenant laws. But there's a whole code section on how these are managed and what landlords can do and can't do. And retaliatory actions are not something that's acceptable under state code. Prosecuting those is another question, but, but it's not something that's tolerated, obviously.
Okay.
And Aaron, are you, when you referring to this business, is it something, are you saying it's a resident that's running a business? Or this is a property that the management has, it's run, I'm not clear.
That's where I'm confused, because it appears that this person does a lot of work around the park. And also in today's day and age, everyone works from home, you know, I'm not trying to restrict someone's ability.
Right.
But I mean, I, I, I went through there last year, I went through there six months ago, I went through there again.
Okay.
He is sprawling, his business, he moves from trailer to trailer. Um, and it's a business being operated out of there. And, and there are multiple cars that go there, vehicles that park there in the morning, there are multiple vehicles that park there during the day. So it's not like it's someone on Etsy, you know, telling.
Okay, you're saying that he is, he or she is installing doors. That's how it sounds, it's such a door, it sounds like a door business.
But uh, maybe, but I've seen other construction equipment there, those, the doors are just what I specifically have pictures of. And when residents have tried to get close to that uh, area, they have been uh, threatened with eviction. Uh, on that one, on that one.
By the park owner?
By the park management. They have been told that is private property and you stay off. However, I've been told that there have been other instances when those residents have said, hey, there's trespassing, we're, we're, you know, can you stop it? And they've done nothing for it, however, this particular person seems to have exception.
Okay.
So get, get with Tim.
Kind of talk to you after.
I'm serious. I've already sent a, a request for the county enforcement officer to take a look.
There you go.
Thanks, Shannon.
We're on top of it.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, because it, it makes, as I tried to do their story as well, it makes incredibly difficult. So I thought this would be a good place for, to have a conversation in the open. Because I'll, I'll echo Carolyn and uh, Councilman Carolyn, Councilman Jones and Councilman Elders.
I know who I am.
People just were not understanding what was being said, and I, it was tough for me to interview them because they were not understanding what the city was trying to do. The people that were, they were appreciative, the people that weren't, they could not see.
No idea, right?
Yep.
You got it, Aaron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, I told, said Aaron would give Aaron the last word, um, and I'm going to hold to that. So can I get a call? Can I get a call to adjourn?
Absolutely.
All right, so motion to adjourn, uh, second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.